We're doing this, we're getting our questions, they are sifting through your questions right now. We're going to present two questions to each of our districts. And I will take us through that in the correct format. But we do have one question that we're gonna pose to all of you now. And we're gonna answer this in the same format that we just did our introductions. I'll ask candidates on the end, start, and you'll pass the microphone this way. Joe, I'm gonna ask you to pass the microphone down here again. And I will start. Each one of you will have just one minute to answer this question. A couple of you touched on this issue in your opening remarks. And I know this is an issue that affects us all in Tampa every day. Our present city council is poised to pass a partial ban on panhandling on the streets of Tampa. In your opinion, is this partial ban sufficient? Or should we ban panhandling on all city streets as they did last year in St. Petersburg?
That's a great question. And I truly expected that to be the first one tonight. No surprise there. Public safety is the number one concern of any government. I don't care what level that's at, the federal, state, local level. As I said earlier, I've been endorsed by the police and firefighters. Public safety is a very big concern of mine as well. We want good, clean neighborhoods, we want safety in our neighborhood. My wife and I, we have a house here in South Tampa. We want the same as everyone else here does too. My answer is this: ban panhandling. Allow firefighters a permit to go out there when they need to. Those guys are out there, and they know something about public safety. And they're out there raising good funds with NDA and other folks. And anybody else who wants a permit, when you come to city council, you show me that you're a legitimate nonprofit organization, you say, you're Dennis. Hey, I'm gonna be out there on Saturday at this street, this corner, here's my insurance. We've got the cover. And we'll allow that if you're a legitimate nonprofit. There is no reason why we need to have an unreasonable approach to swing the pendulum and ban everything. It's not a reasonable approach. I'm a reasonable moderate guy. We can still have public safety, we can still ban it. We can still allow folks out there that are doing good things for you. Thank you.
In reference to panhandling, what I think is eventually gonna happen is there will be a ban in Tampa. Now, at the same time, we have to remember, we do do a mail which will happen. Fifty-three percent of basically homeless is women and children. So it's just not a quick ban. What we have to do as a city and people is we've gotta make sure we've got a plan. I probably know one here that has contacted San Francisco where the homeless are. They have a ban, Denver has a ban, and Miami has a ban. And we've gotta get a plan that sets up for our mental health, for the people that need help. And for people who are just homeless. California's more shaped than we are. And they've done it through faith-based initiatives, through volunteers. So I think as a people and a city, we can do better. The ban definitely is a safety issue, and yes, the ban will go through.
I think that's an important point. I think we need to look at what we can do for the homeless. I think we need to hear more. That being said, panhandling is an issue of public safety. I'm in support of a full ban. I think a partial ban just moves them off main streets onto residential streets, which doesn't necessarily solve the problem. In fact, in some cases, it makes it worse. So I would be for a full ban. I think permitting is an interesting idea to look at. However, it has been ruled unconstitutional with a content-based determination on who is allowed to panhandle. And I'm not sure that would work. For now, I would definitely be for a full ban on panhandling. But I also think we need to look at what we can do for the homeless. And for all these people that will be displaced, how we can be able to afford them. But I'm in support of a full ban. Thank you.
I'm also in support of a full ban. And I too am very concerned about the growing homeless population in Tampa and in Hillsborough County and throughout our nation. But the real conversation here is about economic growth. And it's about bringing jobs and economic opportunity back to our community. The real thing that is going to solve panhandling is if there are jobs out there for people to have and places for them to live. And we need to do a much, much better job promoting Tampa's ideal location as a place to create jobs. We have a port that is poised to be able to do business with Latin America, Central America, South America, and a wide range of homeowners now. We have a lot of cancer center and a University of South Florida that are innovating and creating an educated workforce. There are lots of reasons why people would wanna locate businesses here in the Tampa Bay area, right here in South Tampa. And we need to go out and sell this community to the rest of the world. That will be the end of the ban handling problem.
As a city council, the first thing that I'd like to see is for the city to inform the surrounding counties, cities, and municipalities on what we're going to do about banning the panhandling. That way, we will not do what the city of St. Petersburg inadvertently has done with the mass exodus of their panhandlers coming here. I am in support of a full ban by adopting the same ordinance the city of St. Petersburg did. For our fire department and for my brother Schweizer's, let's open up our parks. Let's have drive-throughs with people that do want to support those worthy causes. You drive through our parks and donate to the Schweizer's and partner.
Thank you. I'm voting three for or against partial ban. Because what it does, it takes the main streets away from panhandling. And guess where they're gonna go? To your street, to your street, to your street, to your street, to your neighborhood. Next Thursday, we'll decide what happens. There's always an action for a reaction. There are also hundreds of families in these neighborhoods of Tampa that depend on Austin District. No more than ten miles. The Birmingham and the Shriman office gives free medicine of what they can sell. The newspaper says over a hundred feet from your counter, I want to space small business. I wanna do business. And the first thing they wanna do is put a hundred people on the building. The plan should be, let's work together. Let's see what the committee says. But I'll give a plan by Thursday, which is this: the Elijah County allows those individuals three days empty the Austin District to collect money three days before the Jerry Newsbell election. Now, let's work with that, and I'll tell you later the results.
Last Thursday, I spent about ten hours out on the homeless count. The expectation of this count is that we're gonna have a much higher rate of homelessness in Hillsborough County due to the recession, due to the foreclosure crisis that we've had for a long time. Society is judged by how we treat the least of us among us. With that said, it's just, you know, panhandling is not a sustainable activity. I mean, I'm in support of a full ban. But I think that, first of all, it's kinda tragic that this issue was dominated with this electoral cycle. Because it's a symptom of a much greater problem. We need to look at social services funding that is being cut left and right across the city, across the county. We need to look at ways to create jobs in new fields, new high-risk industries. Because otherwise, we're gonna be facing this pandemic for a long time. We are gonna see the transition. You know, and I'm fully in favor of that because I understand that the community is crying out over this problem. It's a quality of life issue. And I believe that we need to deal with it sooner rather than later. But let's look at the bigger picture. Why would we have a discussion? Thank you.
Walking on the door, going to Orange Association meetings. This subject always comes up, panhandling. I am in support of a full ban currently. But one of the things that we need to remember is this: the city is not financially or structurally equipped to handle the problems of homelessness. That is not our role. And city council people, and the administration of the city, we are charged by you to find answers to some of these problems. But we cannot find the answer to every problem in town. We need to really support those organizations that do administer to the homeless. Homeless Coalition, Metropolitan Ministries, Faith Cafe, Training Cafe. Go out and help. Find these people, make sure that they have a place to live, they have a place to eat, and that they have a place where they feel safe. We can only do this together as a community. We cannot just ban without trying to help our fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sixty percent of the homeless in this county are full-time employees. That's probably the problem. Someone tells everybody, the clerk at the store. So a full, all right ban is a bad day to a much larger problem than we have in this town. We have a homeless issue. We'll never solve the homeless issue. But we have to be compassionate about what we're talking about. We have to be thoughtful, we have to be compassionate. I support a partial ban, maybe because there are microbarge employers out there who sell papers, sell the district, they are a network, but they're trying. But we have to protect those microbarge employers, sell papers, sell import, sell things that get you under the roof. It costs seven dollars a day just to have a homeless shop. That's forty-nine dollars a week. That's just a bit. If you add food on that, that's twenty-two dollars a day, man, a day asking for a hundred minutes. What I live for is a week of food, I have a cycle. Because they're restricted to the media. And they can only come to a car when they're sold. That'll take the feedback from you, and take the public attention from you. Thank you, everyone.
Everyone, Tom Slaughter. Believe me, they don't want to be out there any more than many people want them to be out there. It's dangerous, it's hot, it's pretty miserable experience. Cars can pass at fifty-five miles an hour, that's a hundred feet per second. This is, this is an accident that's waiting to happen in these boats. Where we can, let's try to give them the mental health services through the city where it's possible. Where they have drug or alcohol problems, that must get them that help. And where they just need a shower and shave, let's give them that help. Now, Pennebys County is doing one thing in particular, rather, I think it's a safety. They started the Gaimin of Hope, and that came out of an organization from San Antonio. And it looks rather promising. So that may be one of my little follow-ups. Thank you.
My name is Riddo Meniscop, and I am in support of a comprehensive panhandling ban. It is a public safety issue. There have been many instances, especially in the last four weeks, I'm a self-observant witness. The light turns green, they're not there on the median, they're in the middle of the street. Somebody's texting, driving, changing their radio station, whatever it is, not paying attention. Somebody gets killed. It's not only a liability to the driver, but also very dangerous to the individual on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick Porst, Senator. Two weeks ago, I was on campaign in Manhattan. And I rolled down my window, and I said, "I own a restaurant down the street, Rigatoni's. If you come to my restaurant, and you sweep my front, and you sweep my back, I'll give you food." Do you know what he told me? "I can't leave here. I'll lose my spot." "Really? You're gonna lose your spot? I bet you're hungry." So there is a difference between being homeless and being a beggar. The beggar means the word W-O-R-K. The homeless means help. And that's what I would do. I would help the homeless. Because I'm fortunate enough to have food on the table every day for me and my neighbor. The homeless is poor. Thank you. I'm Rick Porst.
Tampa Journal's open twenty-four hours a day. It's a big, bright place around the city. So guess what? I take care of a lot of homeless people. I'm the doctor for a lot of homeless people in this community. And here's the thing, I can't see a great reason not to ban panhandling. I don't see a great reason, I don't see what it helps. I don't have homeless people coming to the ER saying, "I had a great day in Panhandle today. My life is better." It's not my home life. I was on the Homeless Coalition when I was at college ten years ago, I was executive secretary. The Homeless Coalition does not support panhandling either. They wanna plug people into their system. They get paid on the federal grant, it's based on how many people they put into that system. Let's ban panhandling, move those people into the system, support the Homeless Coalition's confidence and plan to act for the homeless and homeowner, which, by the way, that's a listed, that's another issue. But it's quite a one and a four that. And let's work with the other organizations that we have in this city. Thank you.
We need to ban panhandling. Homelessness is not the problem, it's a symptom. The symptom is lack of jobs, alcoholism, mental health issues. If we truly care about our homeless neighbors, we will look at the budget. And I've served on the city council's advisory committee, the budget and finance for the last two years. We will stop defunding the nonprofits that are helping these people, professionals that know how to get the job done. I said to the police and fire, I'm voting for it. I am gonna vote to ban panhandling. And I'm also gonna vote that you can't come and collect for a charity. We cannot have an ordinance that says it's not okay to ask for food, but it's okay to ask a cigarette. And that will have to be held up under the courts of law. And I also told the newspapers, when I met Deidre Torro, I'm gonna vote so you cannot sell newspapers. Once again, this is the challenge. I'm open and honest with my position. I wanna hear your views, but we need a ban of panhandling. Thank you.
Quite a hard challenge here, technology. Again, I personally, citywide, we're great experts in this, comments on this. I agree, it's a real challenge to us. But if we don't address it, city, Tampa, Black City, Tampa Bay, and Tampa County together, we're just pushing, pulling around with our neighbors and family. So that is one approach that I would insist on, or at least advocate, working members of the city council and our mayor's role. Now, the reason why I always mention that, one of the roles we have in the city council is to work with, as well as work with the mayor administration. It also challenges the things that come out of the administration. And just not Charlie Brandon Meyer, he only two people, he don't work with all the mayor candidates. So I think you need to look at that as well, as we talk about how things done. Now, that meeting's done, I'd like to try and extract that one, veterans groups, thanks you mentioned. I like to always have cookies, and I'm not gonna have all that, my community, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Simpson, City Council, disagree. I don't think it's a ban handling issue, I think it's a J-WON issue. What I'd like to do is work with the city's board legislature. I mean, I hear a lot of elected officials, Jim and John, and Doug, and Don, on this issue. And they say, "Well, if we ban it here, then it's just gonna move the whole county. Let's move it past that." And I say, "Okay, I live in University of Florida, I live in Gates," and we had a lot of folks there that engaged in this ban. And so what I suggest, and I saw a state representative here, what I would do as a member of the city council is advocate for state legislation that they ban it entirely for. Thank you.
Well, Scott, you're a candidate for a district too. The partial ban is currently being discussed. The W, take the panhandling off of Kennedy, Dale Mayberry, move them closer to our neighborhoods, Bay to Bay, and the hills. I support not by a ban, and the city of Tampa is similar to St. Petersburg. We also need to partner with Hillsborough County, they need to pass a similar ban, so we're not just moving the block similar to what St. Petersburg did. Now, I fully understand that panhandling and homelessness is a symptom of the problems we have with our economy. I want to be in the city council, state focus on here, in the rural area. Provide a platform to allow businesses to grow here. But in the short term, in the near term, the immediate future, we need to ban panhandling out of our life in Tampa.
Susan Wong, I'm ready to see my signs going up, I want to put a ban on panhandling. They have proposed a partial ban, it's just gonna be, exactly get rid of them. I think it's dangerous for you, I think it's dangerous for the panhandlers. I know that Assistant Chief Bennett testified at city council, they used to do, I think it was a hundred and seventy-nine pedestrian-related incidents a year. They're known to do three times that much. So we're utilizing our police force to take care of the traffic wars and the other things going on with panhandlers. They need to get out. The people that are truly need, that want help, need help, are willing to take help. I'm more than one who spends all my time to figure out how to help them. But I don't think the way to help is standing in the middle of the intersection, running between the cars, or looking for money from people, give it or whatever else. And if you give them food, they're not happy. We need a total ban on panhandling.
All right, candidates, thank you very much. I really appreciate you sticking to the time, and you're making a great job of that. Let me explain how this is gonna go now. Because we've taken your questions, we're sifting through them, making sure that we have them sorted as per district. Because some of these districts are obviously South Tampa, some of them are citywide. So our panel is trying to pick questions that pertain to each of those. The first question I'm gonna have for you is just for District Four. We're gonna have you answer one minute again. And we're gonna go through all of that. And then I'll have another question then for District One, another question for District Six, District Two, District Three. And then we'll repeat the process of each one of our candidates having an opportunity to answer two questions. In order to help you candidates, and in order to help our audience, I'll ask this: When you stand up, please say your name again. Say what district you represent, say what district you're running for. And then that will start the clock. So that won't start against you, or count against your time. That'll give our audience members an opportunity to really get to know who you are. Because the listeners to your answers, they also need to know who you are. Let's start with District Four. We all recognize that budget must be trimmed. What services do you see as expendable, and what services are vital and cannot be cut? Be specific. Why don't we pass the microphone once again, Joe, down at the end. And we'll start down there and work our way towards the sun.
Thank you. Dennis Myers, candidate for city council District Four here in South Tampa. As I like to say, nothing is off the table when it comes to budget. There's too much going on, or there's too much development that we need to have here. Nothing's off the table. Everything that we spend, every dollar we spend in the city, for the city, it needs to be maximized. And I'm gonna do that with the city council. I am incoming president of South Tampa Chamber of Commerce. I'm chairman of the Workforce Alliance, help restructure the organization, make it a more efficient county, and bring a backup line to the goal that we had, which is getting folks jobs. And I'll say this about budget, again, nothing's off the table. But there are things that we need to have, there are things we'd like to have, and things we wanna have. Okay? As far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna look first at the things that we need and have to have. Okay? Everything else, I'm gonna take a look at. I don't tell folks I'm on city council, I'm running for city council. Now, let's not forget too, there's gonna be a new mayor. And it's gonna be an agenda that the mayor's gonna present to us and their budget. We need to take a look at that and work with the mayor. And I plan to do it. I met the mayor a couple weeks ago, and she was talking about the city council needing more input from our government than the city council. I'm planning to do that. Thank you.
Charlie Jenkins, District Four. We have a real opportunity here, we have to have a serious dialogue with the city council, with the mayor, with constituents. We have to sit down, we have to figure out our priorities. Our priorities aren't right now. We cannot continue as a city in the way that we're going. We have to look at positive consolidation with our county, human resources, ag offices, purchasing, fleet management. So it's a real fine line. Salaries, we actually did a poll on our website. Should city employees, along with the city council, possibly take a pay cut in a month? Everybody was for that. You know, people are lucky to have a job. Everybody, if you've got a job, be happy. And we have to work to save for our future, and that comes down to our budget. Thank you.
I think we need to look at three things first. I think we need to look at consolidation of services. I think purchasing, fleet maintenance, human resources, and the building department are three opportunities to consolidate the county. I think we need to look at privatizing some services, specifically warehouses and janitorial. I think we need to look at salaries. In my plan, tampaplan.com, I propose five percent cuts for anyone making over a hundred thousand dollars in the city, and also for the city councilmen themselves. And I think we also need to look at pension reform. I think we need to look away from removing the defined system that we currently have. It's unsustainable. And those are four areas where I think we could really make cuts. All these are listed in, again, tampaplan.com. That is a full list of everything that I think needs to be done. I encourage you to go check it out if you, if you have some time. Thank you.
I'm Mary Corwin, I'm also a candidate for District Four. And I actually agree with everything that these three just said. But I would like to continue from where they left off. Pension reform is a critical, critical issue for the city to deal with if we are going to get the budget under control. Because our pension liabilities are increasing every year, even if we're bringing down the number of employees that are working for the city. The city's pension fund lost a lot of money in the market crap of 2008, 2009. It's gonna take a lot more money to shore it up. I mean, definitely, definitely, for people that are being hired by the city in the future. Those people need to be on a defined contribution plan, I think, as opposed to a defined benefit plan. In addition, I think that we're going to have to look at health insurance. We're gonna have to look at what portions employees may, what portions are paid, how high the bill pay is. All of these different items will add up to budgetary savings, and we're going to have to privatize them. It's about all the things that were mentioned, but it's also about the tough choices on retirement benefits, health insurance, and other employee benefits.
Joseph Seeter, I believe the question was, do we want to slash any departments? I don't want to ruin your quality of life. However, solid waste, store water, well, those might be two departments that we could privatize. That would save the budget two million dollars a year. Privatization is not good for all of our departments, but defined benefits. We are paying two-point-five people to do one job. It is now the time to go to the 401K plan, whether it be through attritions, rollover, or step plan. Those are the things that are gonna save us money.
All right, this question is for our candidates on the end of District Six, Tonya Plank. What plans do you propose for a more secure, potable water supply?
First of all, you've had the same warning that for a million years. Problem without the child, three to four million people living apart, now the twenty million. You see, the problem is up. First of all, it must be safe. Second of all, it must be regional, like you've done with Tampa Bay Water. And third of all, since Tampa is unfortunate, you have the lowest water rate compared to the state of Philadelphia County. There's nothing wrong with that, but basic rules of fact. Let me also say that the portable water supply is a single most important issue in this campaign. Why? You can talk about jobs, you can talk about creation, you can talk about paying the moon blue. You can talk, without water, you're not gonna do anything else. You can't have roads, you can't have verticities, you can't have jobs. So although you don't see it, there's no current power, take a shower, and it runs, and it works. But we all got news to have it. And see me later, and I'll talk to you about it.
Kelly Benj, District Six. I understand that open development, ultimately, is part of the problem that's created this crisis of water. Now, the Green Swamp, the Swigmont, the ones, last inventory that land is the headwaters of five rivers. The Hillsborough, the Peace River, the Opa Haa, and the Witty Croochie. Those rivers all flow out to the bay. There's a lot of fresh water that resides in those river, which we have a present part that's created. Those rivers have fresh water that could be used to supply this region. We need to look at this on a regional basis, as we're now looking at this market, Tampa Bay, Hillsborough County, Cold, Pass, Cold, it's a super region. We need to work with Swigmont to address those issues. They're crucial. But at the core of it, you have to understand the root. Is human development is strong, and is something that, you know, I would like to have seen our political officials address twenty-three years ago, because it's not something we should. Thank you.
All right, our next question for District One candidates, which of course is a city-wide race. And the question is about city-county consolidation. Given economic difficulties for many municipalities, how do you feel about consolidation of services that go through a county?
Mike Smores, District One. I was just having a conversation with somebody in the office today, a commercial insurance agent. And I was talking to some builders. One of the things that we could look at in terms of consolidation are our permitting process. Right now, we have one area in the city that has a very good system, but doesn't have the technology. The county has a bad system, but has the technology. We can look at how we can combine those two to make a better permitting process. That could save us somewhere in the area of ten to twenty percent. Second thing is, as you said, we need to wanna look at how we take care of our parks. There may be areas in which we can make contracts with the county to take care of young parks that are near our borders and vice versa. There are lots of things that we can do in terms of being innovative, designing areas that we can save on. We just haven't tried them yet. Thank you very much.
Consolidation. I'm a stark fan of consolidating resources with the county. We have two television stations, the county has a TV station, the city has a TV station. The county has a office department, the city has a office department. The county has a housing department, the city has a housing department. In today's day and times, we have to really consolidate these departments, which we have, and I have the funds to take care of the business to take care of. When you get the official report from 2010, you'll see that the city of Tampa is proposing to raise taxes in order to bring in 10 or double a bond rate. That's the task we have to do. If our bond rate goes up, the interest that people pay on our debt will go up, and our building, borrowing, building is going to go away. So, we need the consolidation to make sure there's enough money and enough resources to take care of the homeless and homelessness, which population is basically talking about. Thank you.
Most of this is about how to save money. One of the big ways we can save is through mixing our procurement process at the city with the procurement process at Hillsborough County. For example, all the things like desks, and tables, and automobiles, and all the other products that the city has to purchase, it all goes out of bid, and they choose the lowest bidder. Well, the city budget's about $700 million, county budget's close to $3 billion, we could really save some money if we were to find our portions of the procurement process with theirs. And also, let's say one more thing, when it came up about potable water, I realized that's not our subject, but I'd like to say something else in here. One of the ways that we can ensure our potable water supplies is reclaiming water. The city's already started a program on reclaimed water. That's going to save our existing pumps, our existing pipes on the potable water, and we can use the reclaimed water for irrigation and other sort of other services. Thank you. Sean Swatch, District 1, Citywide.
How can we make our permitting process more efficient, how can we speed it up? We merge the county and the city, which is merging technology skills organization. By doing that, we can save money, we can make it a one-stop shop, it'll be more enticing, it'll be easier to use. Thank you.
Wow, I'm out of the box on this one, because it's really been a while, and I have opportunities to talk to Mr. Henry, Mr. Lurk, very good friends of mine. Which speed department is going to give the throw up of construction services? Do you know which, is it, will the city give it up, and the county, or the county give it up to the city? All these services are negotiable. Can it be done? Yes. Is it going to be a very difficult challenge? I can tell you, yes it is. It's going to be extremely difficult, but we're really having to take a look at the fact that we're just, we're just a city that needs to be able to do with what we have, and to make it happen with what we have financially, and that is thinking out of the box. And that's what I am, and I'm Rick Porstman, City Council, District 1.
Y'all have written some great questions tonight, I'd like to kind of handle those there, kind of synthesizing them, and making sure that we pick the best one for each one of the races that we have going on. My next question is going to be for District 3. Livability has allowed many of our South Tampa neighborhoods to retain their values. We think it's due to factors of livability like green space, sidewalks, infrastructure. Will you continue to fund these neighborhood improvements?
About a month and a half ago, I submitted an statement around the South Tampa neighborhoods and bicycle projects, and some legislation also, but in that statement, I laid out how I vision this city as an neighborhood, an interconnected city of neighborhoods. They should all flow together, and all go together. We have to sit down with the Green Arctic project, Greenways project, we have to think about micro-transportation, and also transportation to the future, to improve bicycles, pedestrians, and friendly streets. That's what makes our neighborhoods safe, that's what makes our neighborhoods better, that's what makes our neighborhoods more local as well. When we do that, we also think about how local businesses and neighborhoods are appropriate for those neighborhoods. Makes it exist in South Tampa, don't always make sense in Tampa, or in Silicon Heights. It's about a whole grid, business growth in those neighborhoods, which is a sponsor to a neighborhood growing up. Thank you.
Yes, we need to continue to fund these projects. My name's Seth Nelson, I've served on the Citizen Advisory Council for the MPO that's dealt with not just transportation, but how we build our communities. You're going to hear a lot of people talk about, "We need roads, we need more bike lanes." Everyone's talking about this, but no one's talking about the true issues, and we need to stop talking about roads and bike lanes, and start talking about building communities. That's why we all live here. Where we live is the most important place to us, and how we can create a point A to point B, with an internal transportation system, is the key to our future. And it's more than just point A to point B, it's about that development that comes along that rail, it's about the development that will come along the bike lanes around our community, and we build ourselves a walkable city. That everyone says, "When they do it," and I think the day is us, and the time is now. Once again, I'm Seth Nelson, thank you.
Good evening, Chris R, District 3, Citywide. I think these are the areas that's brought me, it's all of my opinion, after we've dispensed with the offices that were trying to equip the neighborhood, we raised issues, the City of Tampa, we were going to do a bashful, and forgot all about the fact that that is our community's regions, livable park, one of the most beautiful in the world. So, by our efforts, mobile island, we were able to, after we got through the lottery ad, to work with the city, prove the light, prove the safety, sidewalks, green lanes, so it isn't that too many a park. We've got clients here, the Gandy Civic Association as well, for 11 or 12 years, I've attended meetings, "How do you like Gandy Day?" That was done by our neighborhood associations taking the leadership, and that's the type of things you can expect out of me. I should be fortunate enough to have their vote in March first. Thank you.
Thank you, again, I'm Michael Schip, I'm running for Tampa City Council, District 3, Citywide. I think it's absolutely integral that we continue to fund these projects, these infrastructure improvements. I was, but what we can do, in terms of extreme budget austerity, everybody knows that, everybody knows that we have to tighten the belt a little bit, just like everyday folks are doing. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to empower the neighborhoods. I was talking to the folks at the historic Hyde Park Day Association, and they've got a fantastic swarm of contractors. They want to fund it, they've got money, they're going to fundraise it for it, they're going to do it in their communities, to improve the parks and whatnot in that small pond area. But the problem is the city will know, they say, "Well, you got to insure it, you need a feasibility study, you need to go get consultants." I want to turn the City Council to a super creative customer service desk, and help them get that done, help them get that done. So, if it's held up at somebody's desk, those who need neighborhood park ideas, I want to go to that City Council technical guy and say, "Look, let me help you get that done. I'm your resource, I want to be your resource at the City Council." Thank you.
Our next question is one that is apparently very important to many of you, because we've got it several different forms, but I'm just going to pick one of the questions that relates to bike safety, and I will tell you, it's one of those issues to politicians like Rural Pieces, the beauty contestants. Yes, I'm all for it. Everybody likes a bike safety, but let me ask you very specifically, for the District 2 candidates, what will you do to make bicycling safer in Tampa?
Thank you, Scott Skirpina, candidate, District 2, Citywide. Bicycle safety has certainly become an issue, has become one of the hot topics that the panhandling has, and it should have. We've had quite a few bicycle deaths in the last few months, and over the last year. Bicycle safety is certainly an issue in our community. We have a beautiful community here, and we have individuals that enjoy not only leisure or recreation, but there's also individuals out there that bicycle tube drum, or bicycle tube drum, and how to get to the school. Now, I don't claim to be a candidate for that sort of thing, we need to reach out to experts in the community, of individual allies, of the school club, those that have different bicycle safety, great ideas as well. We need to look at the more in terms of which bicycle lanes have been done, we've made some great progress on Nebraska Avenue, as it played in the 20th century. We need to address the areas that there are bicycles out there, and make sure we can provide the safest path. Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
I think bicycle safety is such a, I think there are two pieces to it. First of all, we have the teenagers and the young people who go in their bikes, who ride on the end, and we can get them out by the way, which raises very difficult for drivers. Then we have the drivers that pay no attention at all to bicycles, which makes it dangerous for bicycles. We need education programs for the bicycles, and for the motorists. The motorists need to know that bicycles have a right on the road, and the bicycles need to know, the drivers are big, large, dangerous vehicles. One of the strongest advocates for biking in this town that I'm aware of, Peter Nigel is my name, and I've heard him talk about bicycle safety. He has excellent ideas, and I'd like to see him throw out more bike accidents, more you know, as you have a neighborhood that is bikeable, walkable, well-lighted, it becomes safer, it becomes nicer, and it becomes friendly. Thank you.